We will get started with the regular Monday meeting of the Salina City Commission, April 1st, 2019. It's just hard to say that with a straight face, but this is a real meeting and nice to see some fresh faces out here. Could we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
If you're able to stand, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will get started with awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the day of April 6th, 2019, is the 75th anniversary of Altrusa International of Salina, Kansas, Inc. Day in the city of Salina. Brenda Smith, Altrusa International of Salina, Kansas, Inc., Service Chair, will read the proclamation.
Whereas Altrusa International, which was founded in 1917 and celebrated its 100th birthday in 2017, making communities better through leadership, partnership, and service, and proudly moves forward into the 21st century with the tagline of leading to a better community. Whereas the name Altrusa was coined combining A-L-T-R from altruism and the USA for United States, reflecting patriotism, the name has become synonymous for its devotion to the interest of others concept. Whereas Altrusa first organized a service club in Salina, Kansas in 1943 and chartered in 1944, the club is now known as Altrusa International of Salina, Kansas, Inc. Whereas the local Altrusa Club is celebrating its 75th anniversary and has continuously and efficiently provided community service in the Salina area with the focus on the area of literacy. And whereas in its 75 years, Altrusa International of Salina, Kansas, Inc. has performed many hours of service in and around Salina and Celine County, including five little libraries in Salina and one in this area, worked with Books a Million to donate approximately 1,000 books each year to 15 to 18 local community organizations, provided undergarments and clothing for sexual abuse victims at Salina Regional Health Center, hosted graduation receptions for GED and Partners for Success in partnership with Salina Adult Education. Whereas in honor of their 75th anniversary, Altrusa International of Salina, Kansas, is making and providing 75 reusable menstrual kits for girls in third world countries, thus allowing them to continue their education. And whereas on April the 6th, 2019, Altrusa has chosen to commemorate its 75th anniversary celebration with a brunch to celebrate our successes and honor our founders, which started out to be the first of its kind for businesswomen, and became the first women's classified service club, which adjusted to the changing times and opened membership regardless of gender. Resolved that the city of Salina recognizes and acknowledges the extensive and continuous work that has been going on in our area for the past 75 years, and has proclaimed April 6th, 2019, to be 75th anniversary of Altrusa International of Salina, Kansas, Inc. Day.
Thank you. I'm always amazed at all the service organizations in this city. Could you tell us if there are any other activities that folks should look for, and perhaps how someone can meet up with you to join you?
If I'd like to join, they just need to contact me. I'm at Assurance Partners, so you can just contact me. Our Kay Quinn is our president, and she's over at the museum, so get ahold of either one of us. We are having our brunch this weekend, and we do have members from our Altrusa District Eight, which is Kansas, Missouri, Oklahoma, and Arkansas, coming to celebrate with us, and we'll be showcasing our 75 kits that we're making for the girls in these third world countries. We are truly an international organization, and with our focus on literacy, we thought this was a perfect way to celebrate our anniversary.
I hope we have the red carpet rolled out on top of the concrete that's torn up, but
That would be good.
Come up front here, give you a signed copy of the proclamation.
Item 3.2, the month of April 2019 is Fair Housing Month in the city of Salina. Teri Hostetler, Human Relations Commission Chairwoman, will read the proclamation.
Okay. Proclamation of the city of Salina, whereas the fight for fair housing has been more than 50 years in the making since the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1964, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas our country has progressively identified the protected classes to which we all belong, and the Act protects against discrimination not only based on race, color, religion, and national origin, but in 1974 recognized gender, and in 1988 recognized disability and familial status as protected classes as well. And whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and policy, but is enforced locally under Chapter 13 of Salina City Ordinance, and the city of Salina is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide equal housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas we recognize and celebrate the strides that have been made to remove barriers to fair housing, and we recognize that acts of housing discrimination are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness, and that we as a city and nation still have much work to do. Now therefore, I, Trent W. Davis, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Fair Housing Month, and I encourage the people of Salina to learn more about their rights and responsibilities under the Fair Housing Act, as well as the Kansas Residential Landlord and Tenant Act, as we collectively fight housing discrimination within our community.
Thank you. I would imagine every month is Fair Housing Month with all the work that you do.
Hopefully it'll become a Fair Housing Month for everybody at some point.
For everyone. Are there special educational activities this month?
On April 26th, we are going to be having our Fair Housing Seminar that we have every year. It is open to all landlords, tenants, anybody else that is interested. We're going to have topics that include landlord-tenant law and evictions, drugs and human trafficking in housing, sexual harassment in housing, and then a landlord residential tenant act question and answer. And then we'll also cover the local property maintenance codes. And I do have flyers for all of you.
What, is it an all-day?
It's from 8:30 to 3:30.
8:30 to 3:30, and located at Tony's Pizza Event Center. Before you leave, don't, you have to come back up front. Or I could come out there, but this is for you. Should be a filled room at this seminar. Good topics. We will now move to Citizens Forum. It's an opportunity for anyone to come to the podium to speak on a topic that's not on the agenda. I guess that means we'll hear from everyone later on. Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 25th, 2019.
That's about as easy as it's gonna get. Any one wish to move to approve last week's minutes?
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve the minutes of March 25th, 2019.
Second.
Right. Moved in second. Any discussion, corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes for March 25th, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Move now to administration.
Item 7.1, authorized sale of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2019-A, and temporary notes, Series 2019-1. 7.1A, receive report on bids received. 7.1B, second reading ordinance number 19-10994, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2019-A. 7.1C, resolution number 19-7691, prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2019-A. And 7.1D, resolution number 19-7692, authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation temporary notes, Series 2019-1.
Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Resolution number 197682 was previously approved, which authorized the competitive sale of bonds and notes. Pursuant to that resolution, city has distributed its preliminary official statement and notice of sale to prospective bidders. The notice of sale notified bidders that the city would receive competitive public bids on April 1st, 2019, at noon for the notes and at 1 o'clock for bonds, and that commission would consider all bids at their meeting on April 1st. Subsequent to that, we has also held a rating call with Moody's on March 20th, 2019, and we're pleased to report that a rating of AA3 was not changed from previous ratings. At this point, I'm going to ask Dave Artaberry from George K. Baum, who is our financial advisor, to just give you an overview of the bid tabulations and interest rates that we received today, and those are the two pieces of paper that I left on your podium. And then after he gets done, I'll go through the bonds, the projects, and things like that, and the actions that we need to take, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Again, David Artaberry with George K. Baum and Company. It's a pleasure to be here. As Debbie was mentioning, today the city opened bids for the sale of temporary notes and general obligation bonds. Before I go into those results, though, I do want to say that regarding the city's rating, that I was, again, very pleased to see that the city had their rating affirmed at the AA3 level. That is a very, very good rating. And I thought, during the call, Mike and Debbie did a really good job, and we even got feedback from their rating analyst after the fact that they did a really good job of being on top of the city's financial situation and being proactive and preparing to address the city's financial situation. So I thought that was some good commentary from sort of an objective third party. But having said that, today we took bids at noon for the sale of the temporary notes, and the principal amount of those temporary notes was $6,085,000. We ended up receiving a total of four, or five bids for the notes. Two of them were received via an online bidding platform. Those are the ones that you'll see on your sheet that were typed in there. The other three were received by fax. And you can see of the five bids, the firm that was offering to purchase the notes at the lowest interest rate was Country Club Bank, and their net interest cost was 1.810518 percent. That is a really good rate. Last time when you sold notes, you got four bids, and the best interest rate was offered at 2.43 percent. And that was back in, I think, November, so interest rates have come down since then, and I think that's reflected in the results of your sale. Then at 1 o'clock, we ended up, we received bids for the sale of the long-term bond issue. And as you can see from that report, that's the longer report, you received a total of 10 bids. A really, really good response. The best bid was submitted by a firm called The Baker Group, and their true interest cost was 2.801480 percent. And that compares, going back to the last sale of bonds that the city conducted, that compares to a rate of 3.19 percent. So again, considerably lower than the last sale. And the last sale, we ended up getting five bids, and this time we got 10 bids. I was very pleased with five bids last time. I'm really, really pleased with 10 bids. As the way Baker Group constructed their bid, they purchased the bonds and were willing to pay a premium to the city. So even though we had originally anticipated a bond issue of $11,445, when you take into account the bid that Baker Group's, the premium that Baker Group submitted with their bid, what we ended up doing is downsizing the bond issue. So you'll still receive the amount of proceeds you expected. We're just going to be able to do that with a little bit smaller of a bond issue. The final issue size, once you net out the premium they bid, will be $11,090. So that's kind of an overview of the results, and I think the good bids that you got are a function of the good credit rating that the city has, as well as there really has in the bond market, particularly in Kansas, over the last few months, been a very low supply. So I think this just came at a good time. Any questions about the sale or the rating, or?
No, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
So these bonds will partially retire. Temporary note 2018-2 that matures on November 1st, 2019, used to finance the downtown streetscape in an amount of approximately $8.5 million. As you recall, the downtown streetscape was originally going to be financed through Star Bonds. However, as we went through that process and we supplied our application to the Attorney General's Office, the Attorney General, the Secretary of Commerce's office, part of that financing was the field house. And so what ended up happening was, we submitted an application to finance with Star Bonds the field house. So when we got our Star Bond funding in December, we used those funds to pay off the temporary notes for the field house, which then in turn turned around, which meant we had to issue our own general obligation bonds for the streetscape. So if you look back at history, those numbers will move around a little bit. But we just wanted to make sure we reiterate that and revisited it, so you understood that whole financing situation with the streetscape. The projects that were going to be funded with a permanent bond issue is downtown streetscape at $10,200,000, the golf course at $1 million, and the additional is just issuing costs. The temporary notes, we're financing the Smoky Hill River renewal at $2.3 million, the North Ninth Street Bridge at $500,000, police parking at $400,000, the landfill cell number 20 at $2.3 million, and on that one, the, does that say the same?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we had some confusion. Pheasant Ridge at $530,000, and the total cost of $6,85,000. The term of the notes is one year, and the ultimate plan for the notes would be to pay those off with general obligation bonds issued next year after the completion of those projects and when we know what the final costs are on those projects. The closing on the bonds and the notes is scheduled for April 28th, 2019. So there's several actions tonight for you to look at. You have four options for each action. Your options are to approve them as presented, amend the action as presented, postpone the action, or not approve the action. It's important to note that if you decide to postpone or not approve the action, the city's ability to receive competitive bids, as we did on the public sale, may be negatively impacted. So the first action, the first item is to pass on second reading ordinance 19-10994, authorizing the issuance and delivery if not to exceed $11,445,000 principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2019-A.
Any questions, Ms. Pack?
And I do also have bond counsel here if you have questions about the financing or any of those situations, so.
All right. Be appropriate to take questions from the community?
Yes, I think with separate action items, it'd probably be appropriate on each one.
Any questions, comments, from anyone in the audience, or back up front?
I guess the only comment I have is I wish that I had, and I understand that we set the April 1st deadline probably months ago. I mean, that's been set in stone for a while. I guess my only disappointment would be after getting the, that financial overview from the end of February, and I noticed our next one's scheduled for Monday, I think, a week from today's study session. And that's just my only comment, is I just feel, I really would have liked to have received a financial update prior to taking a look at this, especially in light of, and I know that we can never get what I see online matched up to what actually comes in, but when, I didn't know if either one of you had had a chance to take a look at the sales tax receipts, and they were down over 2 percent. I mean, whether we parse it at 2.1 or 2.6 or whatever. But I just, you know, I just, I'm really wanting to confirm that, you know, as we look at the financial history where seven out of the last 12 months, month over month, we have had negative growth, are we, are we, you know, still in a good position to make these payments out of the sales tax as we're receiving that?
As you recall, we did provide recently a kind of a priority list out of that sales tax, and how we structured that was that any debt that we were intending to incur was at the highest priority. So it would be what we would pay off first, and then the projects farther to the right of that priority list would be the ones that we would have to take a closer look at if we fell so short that we couldn't make, that we didn't have it all. But I don't see any speculation that we wouldn't be able to meet our debt payments out of that fund.
As well as at this time, the things that we still, that still haven't matured to the point in the process where we are with these items.
No doubt there's additional conversation to be had about revenue projections and budget adjustments. The other thing I would add is the property tax mill rate is funding a portion of that debt, and that's kind of a segregated revenue source and fund to, but admittedly, there are items in here that are funded by sales tax.
Any action to be taken on this item?
Mayor Davis, I move we approve on second reading ordinance number 19-10994, authorizing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $11,445,000 principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2019-A.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve on second reading ordinance 19-10994. Any additional comment? Do they roll call?
Commissioner Hay.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Nay.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. This motion carries three to one.
Second action tonight is to pass resolution 19-7691, prescribing the form and details of and affirming the delivery of not to exceed $11.445 million principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series 2019-A.
Any questions, comments? Any comments from the public? Any action to be taken by the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion. We pass resolution number 19-7691, prescribing the form and the details of and affirming the delivery of not to exceed $11,445,000 principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2019-A.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve resolution 19-7691. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
This passes three to one, and 7.1D.
Pass resolution number 197692, prescribing the form and details and affirming the delivery of not to exceed $6,85,000 principal amount of general obligation temporary notes, Series 2019-1.
Any comments or questions from the public? Any questions here at staff, or any action to be taken?
Mayor Davis, I move we pass resolution number 19-7692, prescribing the form and details and affirming the delivery of not to exceed $6,85,000 principal amount of general obligation temporary notes, Series 2019-1.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve resolution 19-7692. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three to one. And we can now go to 7.2. Thank you, Ms. Pack, and Ms. Artaberry.
Item 7.2, consideration of requests for a permit to keep bees within the city of Salina.
Good afternoon, Mayor Davis and Commissioners. My name is Monique Colley. I am the manager at the Salina Animal Services, and I'm here for a request for a permit for beekeeping for Lynn Grenage at 1,000 West Walnut. We do have Ms. Grenage here. If you have any questions for her?
It was gonna be my turn so quick. Excuse me. Is this a relatively routine? I can't recall any experience with this.
Well, in terms of routine, it's infrequent in terms of the routine. But we do have code in place that's been in place, I think, since 1966 or '68. But we do have code in place that, that's been in place, I think, since 1966 or 68. That specifies that a permit is needed, and specifies the health officer is the individual to kind of review and make a recommendation on the permit. So, we have a standing working relationship with the Health Department, and both Jason Tiller with the Health Department and Dr. Doopy, who have reviewed the request and recommended its approval. I think we have one or two active permits at the moment.
We have one on record right now.
And staff has looked at the Animal Control Ordinance quite some time ago with the intent of revising it, but I don't think those revisions have been implemented. I can't speak to any discussion or intention as it relates to beekeeping, other than it's been on the books for a long time. I do know that questions have come up, and between Monique and Chris Cotton, they've done quite a bit of research in terms of some of the history and best management practices. So, they're able to speak to that if those questions arise.
Does the city routinely inspect there, or is the inspection only if there's a complaint?
The inspection is through the Health Department, and if there is a complaint of, like, say, a nuisance, like the bees are going after somebody, then we would come in and just to see what's going on with it. And then, if there is a violation of that, then we would ask them to either move the bees, or try and fix what the problem is. I've never had to deal with it since I've been here, so it's been lawful. We've had, like, bees that have, like, gone in somebody's chimney, or things like that, but nothing with hives.
That would be one of my questions, is, I know there's different types of bees, and they probably have different types of habits. Do these bees have a tendency, or would they have a tendency to migrate somewhere else that could create a hazard or a nuisance for nearby residents?
I think, once they're in their hive, that they want to stay there. I know that there have, we have had issues with bees that have made a home in a wall, or in a chimney, or somewhere where they're not wanting, where we're not wanting them. In those, we have people that will come and take care of those bees for us. But in all the time that we've had with the one gentleman who's had the bees since 2015, we've never been called out for his bees.
What very admittedly limited knowledge I have about bees, I think, if you have a group that's moving or on the move, beekeepers are anxious to come and get them, and capture the queen, and the rest of the hive will follow them to wherever they relocate them.
That's kind of what I wanted to bring up, because, like you said, we haven't had another application since 2015. Father Kevin Weber is with Sacred Heart. We just put another application in today for a observation bee hive at the school that we're looking to put in. This has been in effect since 1966, and I think a lot of people realize that bees right now, I shouldn't say they're a commodity, but they're, we're in dire need of bees. We're in trouble for not having enough bees. And I really think that we need to take this ordinance, bring it back, take a look at it, and see about either revising it, or what we need to do. I would, instead of having an ordinance for, I think what we need is a, we register them. We, you know, it's just so we know where they're at, but not, you know, not have a pacific ordinance against the bees. The, we need them. It's a part of the evolution. We need bees right now. And like I said, we will be, like I said, we put an application in today for the bee hive at Sacred Heart High School.
If I may, I just wanted to bring to your attention that the reason the ordinance was originally put in place was that, at the time, some citizens had complained to the then-commission about children being stung by, by the, from the bees, from the hives that were, for whatever reason. So, that's the only reason the ordinance was put in place in the first place, was a complaint that came to the commission back in 1968. I actually found that today at the library for you all this afternoon, but.
Well done. I had asked.
But it was June 24th, 1968, is when that was put into place. And it, the first reading, there was, there was, there were no votes to move it on. The second time it came before there, there were votes to put it on, and by the second, second official reading, then it was adopted. So, it was actually adopted July, July, July 1st, 1968, was when it was officially adopted. After much discussion, after considerable discussion, a motion was made by Commissioner Waddell, seconded by Commissioner Stark, to amend the bee ordinance to read without first obtaining a special permit therefor, signed by the Board of Health and approved by the city commissioners. The beekeepers will have 60 days after publication to get a permit. So, originally, it was going to ban them all together, and then they came back and revised it to the, to what we have today.
And one of the things that we found in trying to look for best management practices, I don't know that we found any best management practices for cities regulating bees, but in the process of looking for that, we found beekeeping associations that provided guidance on best keeping practice, best management practices of keeping a bee hive. And a lot of them pointed out, you need to check the regular, the local ordinances and regulations. And then they kind of spoke to separation recommendations from areas of traffic, and, you know, occupied structures, that type of thing. So, I think there probably are some guidelines that might be applicable, but having said that, it could be through a registration process. It wouldn't necessarily have to be prohibited and go through a, as formal of a licensing process as we're currently doing.
Well, and talking to the, we've got two beekeepers at the school. Like I said, Father Kevin's one of them, and we've got our counselor. And in answer to your question, they tell us that in that hive, as long as the queen bee is in that hive, those bees will stay pretty well close to that hive. They won't go very, very far. If the queen happens to die, or something happens to the queen, then they may move on. But other than that, they're pretty well homebodies.
Doing research, we did find, found multiple requests for bee hives from the 60s up through the 80s, to the most recent one in 95, and none of them were disapproved.
And I think a current trend in light of the bee situation is, you now can readily purchase what they're calling a bee home, not necessarily a hive, not to the extent of what a beekeeper might do, but much like a birdhouse, a bee house, you can put in your backyard, so that's probably representative.
That require a permit, too?
Well, it's probably representative of the changes our code doesn't reflect.
Yeah. What constitutes needing a permit? I mean, is there a certain size of a bee hive, number of bees you'll have? Good question.
It's not identified. It's unlawful to harbor any bees within the limits of the city without a permit.
And I'm not anticipating any issues, but if we ever did have a problem with some bee hives within the ordinance, does it give us a timeframe, or how do we address that, if they have to be removed, or?
It depends on what, what kind of problem that we have. If it's the bees are, say, the queen dies, and the bees decide to go off somewhere else, and they're causing nuisance somewhere else, then we do have access to people who will come and help us with bees. As animal control officers, we don't really have a lot of experience with that. We'll come help as much as is needed, but we would like to have a professional in our pocket to know that they're going to, they're going to be able to do it the right way, so nobody gets hurt, or with as minimal injuries as possible. I mean, people are going to get stung, but, you know, we try and do what we can. And we do have a list of beekeepers at the shelter, if anybody has an issue or a problem. And those are the people that we refer to when people call us, and we know them all, and they know us. So, it's just kind of, one of the, it's case-by-case basis, really.
The, the code reads, "Any permit granted by the Board of Commissioners hereunder shall be subject to revocation in the event said applicant shall fail to comply with the terms and conditions of the special permit, or if the keeping of the bees becomes a nuisance, health hazard, or detrimental to the general welfare of the residents of the city."
I was going to ask, how do you know where the bees come from, if there are two or three hives in a close area, but that's.
And that's why I think the permit process, or having us, having the shelter know where these bees are being kept, we're going to know in proximity where, we're going to know the addresses, and we're going to know where these bees are. So, not that we want to regulate anybody, but to have it for a safety issue, for if somebody's complaining about it, it's nice to already know that this person has a bee permit, or whatever they need to have, and that they're legal to have it, because there are going to be people who do call and complain because they have a bee hive in their backyard. So, we just want to make sure that we know where they're at, as the shelter, so we can kind of help people out as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Grenage, would you like to educate us further?
I'm sure. What else you want to know? I can tell you that I have two colonies ordered. They're small colonies, they're called a nuc. It stands for a nuclear hive. They contain a mated queen and the workers. They also already have eggs, larvae, honey, and pollen. I did that because I'm a brand-new beekeeper. Obviously, I don't have any other hives. So, I went that way. They're more expensive that way. I'm picking them up in May in Falls City, Nebraska. People were talking about swarming. That usually doesn't happen when, my son is a beekeeper in Topeka, and he has four hives. So, I've learned a tremendous amount from him. I've spent a massive amount of time watching videos on YouTube. I also have a friend in Clay Center, which is where I'm originally from, that has a very, very small vineyard orchard, and he has bees that he keeps to take care of his, he does wine and that kind of thing, and he wants to not have to go out and try and hand pollinate. But I'm getting a mixture of, the breed is Carneolent and Italian. These bees are very well-known for being gentle, easy to take care of. That was something else I was looking for as a new beekeeper. The bees don't usually swarm when the queen dies. The reason they swarm is because their hive gets too crowded, and so what they do is, they create a new queen, and the old queen takes half of the workers and leaves. The way to stop that is to simply add another box on top of your hive. You'll start with what they call a deep, single box. I'm using 10 frames, which is pretty much standard. I already have two more deeps and a medium prepared, in case I think the bees are going to swarm, so that that won't happen. If it still looks like it's going to happen, I have already talked to my supervisor at work, and she will let me put more hives out on her land. She lives out of town, out by Canoplis. So, I've kind of put those contingencies in. I'm also putting these hives inside an old dog pen that's not being used. I kind of feel like that will help. There are no kids anywhere nearby, but just in case, I don't want a kid running into and knocking over a hive and getting hurt. The only way someone's going to get close to these hives is if they do it intentionally, because they're going to have to go through a gate of the dog pen to get close to those hives. I don't know what else you might want to know. Like I said, I'm talking from the experience of talking to beekeepers and watching YouTube videos. I am going to my first, they haven't had one since, since December, but my first North Central Kansas Beekeepers Association meeting is this coming Sunday. It's out by Canoplis at Moorford Lavender Farms, and so I'll be attending that. I am also trying to get in touch and become a member of the Kanza Beekeeping Association that meets in Manhattan. I want to learn as much as I can and do the best that I can to take good care of these bees. Frankly, I have a huge garden, both community garden and at home, and I'm tired of having to hand pollinate things because there are no bees. So, are there, are there any questions for me?
I enjoy just listening to you.
Okay.
It's a nice break from things like public financing and debt. And actually, you know, should be in our back of our mind, when we're looking at our recycling and our environmental actions.
I have set up so that they will have water nearby, which is, from the research I've done, it looks like a lot of the time, the only real problems that people have with them in an urban environment is little kids have waiting pools, and bees take a lot of water. And so, they will go to the waiting pools, or they will go to a window air conditioner that's dripping to get the water. So, I've already got set up a water source for them, so that that won't be a problem.
Well, that answered one mystery. I always noticed that they were in the air conditioner. Now I know why.
I do have a quick question for you. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
What have you thought of the, of the process? I mean, has this been a pretty straightforward process? Obviously, we don't go through it very often.
The only problem I had with the process, I missed the call from the Health Department, and I had terrible trouble finding who I needed to talk to. It took a couple of hours on the phone to be able to find who I needed to talk to. Once I got that discussion, and I don't know if one of you gentlemen, I don't know who it was that I was, I was speaking to, but, yeah, once I, I talked to him, yeah, there was no problem. The city clerk was very, very nice to help me out. The gentleman that was, you know, going to make the recommendation here, everybody was wonderful about it. Like I said, there was some confusion, just because I didn't realize it was such an unusual thing. And nobody, nobody at the Health Department knew who I was supposed to talk to when I tried to return the call.
And I guess the point of that question was just, once you got to the right person, it was a pretty, it was a pretty straightforward process.
Very simple.
Because I share along with, you know, Commissioner Hay, and obviously with staff, I like the idea of having the hives registered, so that we know where they are. So, I don't know if, you know, if it warrants, I mean, they, they are allowed with a permit, correct? So, I mean, I don't know if it warrants revising what we have or not, but I'm glad that you found it to be a pretty straightforward process.
And it was actually the North Central Kansas Beekeepers Association that suggested to me that I check into the ordinances. And for a couple of years, I was a court reporter, so I don't have trouble finding ordinances and things. I know how to do that. And as soon as I found that, then I called the city clerk, and they knew exactly, even though it was old, they said, yes, it's still in effect. And, yeah, there was, matter of fact, she emailed me a copy of the, the application, and I emailed it back.
And, you know, along those same lines, that might be something we may, at some point, want to consider delegating to the city manager, to just perform an administrative task.
I think an alternate approach might be to identify some best management practices in terms of beekeeping, and we can codify that one way or the other, and allow people to register, rather than bring a permit all the way to the city commission for consideration, provided that they, number one, can abide by those practices, and then as long as we keep some language, but if it becomes a nuisance, we can prohibit it in some way, or require some modification. So, staff can do some additional research and, and bring an ordinance for your amendment for your consideration.
Thank you very much. I think we're all going home a little smarter than we were when we came in. Alrighty, I suppose this is just a simple approval action that we need to take.
Yes.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve the enclosed application for permit to keep bees.
Second.
Easy enough. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the permit to keep bees, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is where I'm afraid there's some April Fool's joke getting ready to happen. But unless there's other business, we're going to executive session.
There is the request for executive session.
Sorry.
Yeah, you're not going home yet, but.
Yeah, forgot to turn to the back. I'm sorry. Actually, this, I knew there was one, this one doesn't have it on.
This one doesn't mine either, either.
Is it my time to shine?
It is your time to shine.
All right. I move that the city commission recess, oh, how long do you need?
Oh, let's try 45 minutes, recognizing that it's better to be short than long on that guest.
Okay. I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss the subject of matters relating to anticipated mediation in the context of pending litigation in U.S. District Court relating to the former Schilling Air Force Base, environmental matter with environmental counsel for the Salina Public Entities and the city's legal counsel, based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:30.
That was an easy one. Second.
It's been moved in second to recess into executive session for 45 minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four to nothing. Is there action?
Well, we have two items for you. Don't anticipate action, and then I think Mr. Banks wants to clarify.
I just wanted to clarify that environmental counsel will be joining you by telephone.
Okay. Thank you. Then we will recess into executive session.